So it is officially 7/11 and we will call this meeting to order. Tonight is Thursday, May 7th, 2020. This is a special school committee meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District, School Committee. This meeting is being held via Google Meet in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL Chapter 30A Section 20. This meeting is also being recorded by the Berkshire, excuse me, Berniston Northfield Community Television Station and will be streamed live if available on Facebook. Massachusetts. Okay, let's begin. Our first agenda item, our appearances, interviews, Special Education Administrator Hiring Determination. So welcome Kristi Fontaine. She is here with us on Google Meet this evening. Everyone should have received a packet of information and questions. So I'm not sure if someone would like to speak that was on the committee or John?
Kristen, can you just identify who the phone numbers are just so we know who's up here?
Absolutely. So Jim Bell, your last two digits are of your phone number. Are they the 29, I believe?
29.
Yes, okay. And then the last two digits of 93.
That's me, Ann Harding.
Perfect.
Who is it? Wait, I didn't get who that was.
It was Ann Harding, thank you.
Oh, okay.
And that's it for telephone numbers unless I'm missing one. Is that what everyone else sees?
Yep, that's all I see.
Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna apologize in advance when I got onto the meeting earlier today. My screen is freezing on me, so if there's a delay, I apologize. Just bear with me. Okay, so John?
Sure.
Would you like to discuss the steps that have been taken thus far?
Yes, there was a search committee formed. Obviously, we had posted for the position. We had applicants, the search committee met, reviewed the applicants. We narrowed it down to a few that we wanted to bring in for an interview. So Kristi was one of those. We had three finalists and we really felt that Kristi was really the right person for the job, has a lot of experience. And so we wanted to bring her forth as a candidate. We do have some questions, you know, that you've been provided that you can ask Kristi. She can tell you a little bit about herself and her experience, but I'm very excited at the potential of having Kristi join our district.
Great, thank you. All right. So because I'm manipulating two screens at once, would someone like to begin by asking questions? Or Kristi, would you like to just tell us a little bit about yourself? Why don't we start there?
Okay, so I am, I actually lived in the town of Northfield for 22 years and raised two daughters, both of whom partially went through the Pioneer Valley Regional School District, one up through eighth grade and one up through sixth grade prior to moving out of town. During that time, I worked at Greenfield High School for 15 years, nine of those years as a special education coordinator at the high school level. Various periods of time also at the middle school level during some transition times. I then transferred to Westfield when we moved back to South Hadley and worked as a special education, special education educational team leader for part of one school year from December to June of one year and then the following September became a special education supervisor where I was primarily at the elementary and preschool level. And I was in Westfield for a little over four years. And then as a result of some budget issues that were going on was downsized and then became the special education director at Pioneer Valley Pioneer's Emergency School and was there for two years before moving back to Athol Regional School, Athol Royalston Regional School District where I have been for the last two years as the special education coordinator for the district.
Great, thank you. Sharon, did you want to say something?
Yes, I went over all the information that was provided Kristi and it looks very good. I also wanna, wanna just make it publicly known that there is no connection between Kristi and myself, Mrs. Fontaine. So for those acquiring minds, you can set it to rest. We are not related.
Although I'd be delighted.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Sharon.
Yeah.
Great. So we were provided with interview questions. There should be, let's see.
You're on the last document, Kristen. I mean, if you want, I have them up in front of me. Did you want me to ask the next question?
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Okay, Kristi, what's your experience with working with each of the following areas? There's quite a few, so if you need a reminder, that just let me know. Social workers, ELL programs, school nurses, substance abuse programs, homeless families, and early intervention.
I'm just writing them down next to me.
Okay, your experience with working with guidance, social workers, ELL programs, school nurses, substance abuse programs, homeless families, early intervention. It covers a lot of the job.
Right, right. So I, in my current position, I work very closely with the early intervention or the early childhood director as well as being at the preschool level in, in Westfield. So working on the child find and the eligibility process, the transition from early intervention over to school programming, school-based programming. So running IEP meetings and making evaluations with, with EI and working with the early childhood director. We coordinate that. And in Westfield, I was the special education supervisors at the preschool level for part of the time when I was in Westfield. So I'm very familiar with the EI process. Working with homeless, back in from my days in Greenfield, we, you know, we worked with, with making sure that homeless students were receiving the ability to attend school and to make sure that transportation was provided for the students who wanted to return to their school of origin. And let's see, guidance, I work closely with the director of guidance at the high school in Athol and both, and in Greenfield as well, working on scheduling. Part of my role at the high school was doing all of the special education scheduling with the guidance counselors there. Worked with guidance counselors in Westfield as far as making sure special education students were earning the appropriate credits and being able to earn the credits to graduate from high school in classes that would support their progress with passing MCAS. Adjustment counselors are a very integral part of working with kids who have social, emotional needs. So we are, we work very closely, making sure that the special education teachers and students are able to provide quality support for the students so that they are available for learning. So working on scheduling and making sure that we have appropriate services in, in place for those students. Right now in Athol, we have a very small ELL population. The ELL coordinator reports into our office and keeps us up to date on what we need as far as the laws being updated. And so I feel as though I'm pretty up to speed on what, what the ELL services look like and should, should be. Substance abuse in our district right now, we have a partnership with Haywood Hospital for a variety of different opportunities. I understand you, are you working with Haywood Hospital as, as well?
Yes, we are.
So that's something that is, that's familiar to me. And nurses in every district that I've worked in, nurses are, you know, just meeting with them regularly and staying apprised of what's going on in the district and new regulations that are coming along is important for our practice as well.
Great. Okay, you want me to go ahead and ask the next question or anybody have follow-up questions?
Any, is there any follow-up? Nope. Okay, go ahead, John. It looks like there isn't any follow-up if you'd like to.
Kristi, how would you review our process for identifying, monitoring, and supporting students who are not meeting learning expectations? And then what would you look for in a robust response to intervention system?
Well, as far as the robust RTI system, I think that developing the protocol and making sure that all of the schools are following the same protocol as far as what types of pre-referral activities are happening and the types of data that are being collected is, is important across the board. And making sure that we have the supports in place from Title I to adult support in the classrooms, whether it be through general education paras or special education paras and teachers in the classrooms, being able to collect the data and provide the support Monitoring the, sorry, the phone just rang. Monitoring student progress and keeping data and making sure that the interventions that we're trying are, and implementing are, are making a difference and if, if not making those mid-course corrections to be able to see, see that progress before making that referral or progress or lack thereof before making that referral to special education. Can you repeat the first part of that question again?
Sure. How would you review our process for identifying, monitoring, and supporting students who are not meeting learning expectations?
I would first want to meet with the principals first, see what we're doing and what's in place to collect that data. And I would want to meet with the principals and the curriculum, the curriculum administrators to make sure that we are offering the best types of supports and programs to our students. And do we need to look and look at what we have as far as our curriculum programs in the areas where we're falling short?
Okay, great. I don't know if there's any school committee follow-up questions or?
I have a question. Hi Kristi, this is Sue O'Reilly-McCray.
Hi.
Hi, I just want to say I read through your documents and was really appreciating that you have early childhood experience as well as through high school. I wonder, could you just sort of tell us about a successful RTI experience in the district you're in now that you think would sort of show us your work?
Sure, we have, we had a number of students prior to my arrival in the district. The district had been pretty heavily a pull-out class. Kids were being pulled out of the classroom for support in special education, but also support from Title I. We, they were separate entities. When I came into the district, we were, we were just starting the initiative of having push-in services and having Title I push into the classroom and being able to work in concert with the classroom teacher and being able to step in and provide some intervention in the classroom has really helped to bolster the student progress. And we also have, one of our Title I teachers is, she's also certified as a special education teacher. So with that lens, she's able to really kind of assess where a student is and break that down to where a student is really needing the most support, whether it's in letter-sound correspondence or that decoding process. Right now in our current, in my current district, we have only ELA support in Title I, we don't, or reading support in Title I, we don't have math support. But by having, having the Title I interventionist going into the classroom as opposed to just strictly the pull-out services and working hand-in-hand with the teacher has been, we've seen a tremendous growth in, in student success.
Can you just tell me what the teacher's role is in the RTI process, the classroom teacher?
Sure, the classroom teachers are working with the students and they're working with them as a whole group. So doing small groups and individual intervention where necessary. They're collecting the data and adjusting their practice, making mid-course corrections and collecting the data as they go along and keeping, keeping, running records and progress monitoring the students in the classroom.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Kanya.
Sure. Thank you. Hi, Chris, this is Tanya Gaylord. I am the Director of Finance for the district or Business Manager. That's not my title right now, but anyways. I just wanted to ask what your interaction or the part you have played in providing information to the Business Manager or Director of Finance in your previous district, excuse me, for the Schedule IV and the special ed transportation of the year report?
I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit there.
So, so there's a Schedule IV and a special ed transportation of the end-of-year report, which goes to the state of Massachusetts. And that involves breaking out your out-of-district tuition by age group, level, how many students, et cetera, the same with transportation. And I was just wondering if you've been involved with providing that information to these managers in the districts you've worked with before as a special ed coordinator?
In Greenfield and Westfield, that was not part of my job. I did a little bit of that when I was doing my practicum for my master's degree, my licensure as a special ed administrator with my director in Westfield. In my current district, we have a Director of Transportation or Director of Operations or Director of Transportation, what his new title is or his title. So with regard to the, the transport, the special ed transportation, that has not been my main job responsibility. I keep track of the out-of-district students. Are you referring to the, the transportation costs for the out-of-district students?
Yes, so for the end-of-year report, we have to split that up between sped students, foster care students, and the homeless population. But that does fall with the special ed director position in our district to contract and coordination with VanPul, which is our vendor that we use. And then at the end of the year, verifying, sorry, there's background noise, verifying the amount of students that were transported to the end, the cost associated with that. I was just curious what, we can certainly talk about it more later, but.
Sure.
Good to know.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any other questions from any of the school committee members or anyone, Claire or Renee? None. Renee, do you have any questions? I see Claire's head shaking, no, but I can't quite see your face. If you have a question, feel free to ask.
I don't, I don't have any, not so far.
Okay.
I'm happy to jump in when I do, believe me.
Okay, and Renee, you're good?
Yeah, we had a representation on the hiring committee, so we feel very comfortable, but also happy to listen tonight as well. So thank you for.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks like the questions have been answered. Is there any follow-up or any additional questions anyone would like to ask of Kristi? All right. It doesn't appear so. So the next step would be discussion around Kristi and her qualifications. And then if the school committee is interested in, in moving forward and taking the next step, we would then move into executive session to discuss the details of a contract.
I'm ready for executive session with Sue.
Okay, thank you. If everyone can just announce who's speaking because it's, it's hard to place the voices. Thank you.
Claire, are you going into executive session now or are you gonna wait to the end?
So we'll go into executive session now as soon as Tyler gives me the A-OK that he is able to manipulate the, the program so we can do that. So if there is a motion?
This is Karen. I'll move that we go into executive session to conduct, is that what's written here?
That's correct.
For negotiations with non, with, to, contract negotiations with special education administrator position.
And I'll second that, this is Pat.
Okay. All right, any discussion? So we'll have to take a roll call vote. And I have a list of attendance, so I'm happy to go down the list of, all right, David just said he is recusing himself, so he will not be participating. I'm happy to go down everyone's name if, if that's easier and a more organized fashion instead of everyone just sort of shouting out.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, so please, once I call your name, just state your name, your vote and, or your town and then your vote, please. So Jim Bell?
Jim Bell Berniston, yes.
Abby Pratt Lyden, yes.
Okay, David is recusing himself. Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton Berniston, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil Lyden, yes.
Pat?
Pat Sharon Northfield, yes.
Seth?
Seth Kratz, Northfield, yes.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly-McCray Warwick, yes.
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sharon?
Sharon Fontaine Lyden, yes.
Okay. And Kristen Gonzalez, Northfield, yes. Okay, Tyler, so when you give me the okay. Okay, it looks like we are back in open session. Can everyone that has now connected to the call outside of the school committee members, can everyone hear us? Renee, you're okay? Okay, perfect. You were the first face I saw on the screen, so I'm sorry to call you out, but. And Claire, you're, you've joined us and who else is here now?
Tanya.
Tanya is here and Kim Guthrie, you have joined us, okay? And that, that looks like everybody, okay.
Kristen, do you want me to contact Kristi after?
Yep, let's, let's just do the vote and then you can contact her and let her know what the outcome of our vote is.
Okay, I need her to rejoin this meeting, correct?
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
To return to public session or we did that already?
We did that.
We are, we're back in open session officially.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we need to have a motion stated regarding extending an offer to Kristi Fontaine pursuant to contract negotiations if someone would like to.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we offer Kristi Fontaine, a special ed administrator, the position pursuant to contract negotiation.
I'm not sure what that was. Okay, Sharon, I did. Yes.
Seth Kratz, I second the motion.
Okay, Seth did it first.
Thank you, Seth. Okay, any discussion? No, okay. If there's no discussion, we'll begin the vote and I'll just go down our attendance list if everyone is okay with that. Ann, are you here?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, perfect. Jim?
Jim Bell Berniston, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt Lyden, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton Berniston, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil Lyden, yes.
Pat?
Pat Sharon Northfield, yes.
Seth?
Seth Kratz, Northfield, yes.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly-McCray Warwick, yes.
Jess?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sharon Fontaine Lyden, yes.
And Kristen Gonzalez, Northfield, yes. Okay, perfect. All right. Okay, so next on our agenda under new business, vote to accept the amended contract for the Director of Finance. And this was provided to us in our packet. Okay, Sharon, is there a second?
I second Karen O'Neil.
Okay, is there any discussion? I can't see everyone's faces now. Jeannie, go right ahead.
I have a question for Tanya. How much work have you been able to proceed with for your certification as Business Manager?
So the certification was actually put on hold with the move because we didn't think that I'd still be able to escort in Massachusetts, not living there and being able to go through the panel review, but we've received further information that I can continue on with the panel review process for my certification. And Joanne has actually re-allowed me to apply for the certification because she's our administrator for the ELAR website. So I will be submitting my transcripts and my portfolio in the near future and be moving forward with that panel interview and they'll do it remotely.
Do you think that's something that will be completed with, by the end of the year?
By June 30th, no. There's no way, not with prepping for, but by the calendar year, I would say yes. I don't think it takes very long once they receive the documents that they need.
No, I never expected it to be done by June 30th of 2020. No, I was meaning it, you know, the calendar year, maybe 12 or 12 months from now, whichever. That was really my intention.
Yeah, I'm hoping it'll only take a couple months, honestly. I just have to prepare my, you know, give them an updated resume, my transcripts and proof of the work that I've done in the district and any other things that they request, probably some referral letters and so forth. And then they'll invite me to a panel interview. Again, that'll be done remotely and then they'll make, they make the recommendation. Um, and then they'll make a, they make the recommendation to the Commissioner for certification. Or they will request additional um things be done, provided whatever to make that. But Rick doesn't see it being an issue at all.
Pat?
I was reading through the contract and there's a reimbursement for expenses. Does that just travel within the district or um or what is that? It doesn't state what it is. And I just was wondering.
That is my actual travel reimbursement for coming to the district and that was actually recommended by the state as well. The only change in the contract in front of you from the one you voted on last time is the certification language and that was also a request from Desi because it had been removed since the last contract.
So when we um began this process, Desi had laid out the recommendations in which they felt we should develop the contract around, um just so everyone is aware. Go ahead, Jeannie. Oh, Jeannie, we can't hear you.
Have we kept a file on all these recommendations from Desi and from the state regarding this?
So um I have email cor- some email correspondence from Rick um and John does as well. John?
My question is, is a file of this being kept if case we need it for future reference?
Yeah, we have uh communication on file regarding all of this, including the uh evaluation that you spoke about, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Pat?
Um, maybe we should put something in there what that reimbursement for expenses are out of um travel between where she lives to where her workplace is or how many times a year. I mean, that kind of thing. Because this is sort of open-ended. I understand it now and I did when I read it, but I'm not sure that other people reading it will understand it.
So it's a monthly travel stipend, so it'll be paid sort of like the special ed or the um the superintitatus.
I think that's great, but I think we just need to get it in writing too.
So just so you guys realize, the more times we have to come back to the table to vote on this, the longer it's gonna take for me to actually be working for the district full-time. And right now, we're at the end of May for year-end and getting really tricky.
Um, go ahead, Karen. Karen, I saw your hand go up first and then Abby's hand.
I, I don't see any problem with it staying the way it is. Um, it's pretty clear she has a lot of travel to do back and forth and it was in the previous contract as well.
Okay. Abby?
So I'm seeing um specific reimbursement for travel expense as well as the reimbursement for expenses in here. I wonder if that's the same thing or if that's meaning two different things.
Can, can you say that again for me, please?
Yeah. So on the bottom of page three, it has reimbursement for expenses, which is what I think Pat was talking about, which is all.
Okay, so that's just if I were to pay for anything out of pocket for the district, like if I had to buy supplies to do reports or something like that, which I've never had any expenses, but that's a typical language in any, in any of these contracts. It's not union. So even Brendan Suzanne, so if they have to go pay for postage for the district or whatever, that's a typical expense reimbursement. I have not asked for, had to pay anything for the district since I've started. So that's a typical expense thing. So postage, printing, you know, anything like that.
And I think that's what Pat was referring to.
It was. Okay. I thought she was talking about the travel one because nothing has changed since the last time we met.
I knew that.
That's underneath.
Thank you, Matt. Abby, that's, that's, you're right on.
Kristen, can I add in really quick?
Go right ahead, John.
I was gonna say, Desi um reviewed this, our overseer, the Associate Commissioners reviewed this contract and the language as well as Russell. And so, you know, they, they were, you know, they were in agreement of, you know, protecting the contract. All right, I'm not sure what, that's not my noise coming from me, David Young. But uh, but anyways, I just wanted to just throw that out there. The Desi and the Associate Commissioners have all reviewed this contract. And I just uh am hoping that we don't push this off further because I know Tanya would have to give a two-week notice to her job and we're, you know, already on up into the, you know, coming up in the, you know, middle of May soon and the year-end, so. Standard language in, in the contract.
And I've been working 20 to 25 hours a week for the district through this COVID-19, so it's becoming really difficult to do what needs to be done for year-end without being 100% with Pioneer right now.
So is there a motion? I'm not sure who that is.
Whoever has a phone number ending in 93 has some feedback. It seems.
I think it's poor Anne. It could be the, the reception, I mean, and the connection tonight is terrible. So I can't, I mean, for me, and I live in the center of town with good internet, so I can't imagine what it's like for others. Um.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep. Who's, who is, who's speaking?
I'm sorry, it's Claire.
Yes, go right ahead, Claire.
Are we paying um for Tanya to fly back to Pioneer, back to Northfield, back and forth? Is that part of her travel?
So it is a generic stipend and is only a set amount. We are not reimbursing for full travel.
Can I ask what that amount is?
It's $2,500 for the, the entire year and it cost me about $6,000 to come back and forth between rental car and flights for the eight trips that require to be in the district.
Hey, I thank you for asking. I just wanted.
Karen, go ahead.
Clear with that. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'd like to move that we um accept this new contract for um the Director of Finance. Amended.
Seth Kratz, I second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. If there's no discussion, I will go down um through the list. And I just want to get clarification. Is, is David here? David, are you participating in this?
Yeah, I'm here. I, I was uh contacted by a member who thoughtfully suggested I mute and now I'm unmuted and I'm gonna re-mute.
Okay, thank you. And Sharon got disconnected again, so if we could just give her a moment to rejoin us. Um. I appreciate everyone's patience as we try and navigate these virtual meetings with our limited internet service in certain areas of our community.
Now we can understand our kids' angst sometimes when the computer doesn't work and they have online classes.
Yes, definitely. I'm wondering if Sharon can also join, um because Abby, I see you in your vehicle. I'm wondering, are you at the town hall as well?
Yep, I'm parked right next to Karen's car.
So I'm wondering if we could invite Sharon to do the same.
I have done that, but I didn't get an answer from her when I suggested it.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll re-invite her.
Yes, yes.
And see for.
I'm back.
Okay, thanks, Sharon. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Did, did, did we get a motion made?
Yes, we have a motion and a second to accept um the updated uh DO, the Director of Finance contract.
Can I vote before I get cut off, off again?
Sure.
I vote yes.
Just say your name before you vote, please, so that the community, if they don't have video chat, they know who's speaking.
Sharon Fontaine, yes.
Okay. Um, Jessica? Jess, do you want to vote?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly McCray Warwick, yes.
Seth?
Seth Kratz Northfield, yes.
Pat?
Pat Sharon Northfield, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil Lyden, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton Bernadette, yes.
David?
David Young, no.
Okay. Abby?
Abby Pratt Lyden, yes.
Jim?
Jim Bell Bernadette, yes.
Okay, and Kristen Gonzalez Northfield, yes. So the motion passes. Welcome back, Tanya.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Sorry.
Welcome back.
Dogs are barking.
All right. Um, next on our agenda under new business is the memorandum of understanding between the Pioneer Valley Regional Education Association and the Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state of emergency concerning the COVID-19. John? Are you there?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, do you want to discuss this?
Yeah, this was something we talked about in our last meeting and I think you unanimously voted to approve um continuing to pay our employee, our staff members, both the teachers um and the paraprofessionals in these two memorandums. And there was a discussion um at that time because it ended, I believe, May 1st about continuing it through the end of the year, which I supported. And I think everybody on this committee also did. So this is just up, the two MOAs are just the updated version extending um that to the end of the school year. We are continuing now um, you know, you know, teach remotely um and their teachers are working hard. So this is just extending that date on the original document.
Are there any questions or is there a motion regarding this memorandum of understanding?
One?
Yes, go ahead, Karen.
Um, it is actually a memorandum of agreement and that is not what is on the agenda. It's this memorandum of understanding, so. We need to clarify which it is.
So the document, go ahead, John.
It'd be an MOA, memorandum of agreement. I think that was the original document. I think that's what this is. It was probably just a oversight when typing the agenda.
Okay.
For most of my life, I've used the words interchangeably, memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding. I've never appreciated the uh difference. Karen, maybe you can school me off-camera sometime.
I have no idea what the difference is, David.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's significant. So don't, you know, potato, potato.
In terms of the union, we have, we've used both memorandum of understanding and memorandum of agreement. I really think it's just a word choice between, you know, really what, what do you like better and it really is like writing it and it's understanding agreement. It's really the same thing. Um, I'm not really concerned about it because we've used both intermittently. But I understand what you're saying, Karen. Right, it's one thing, but it is another.
All right.
I, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, David.
Uh, this is a little bit of field and I'm, I don't mean, mean it to uh disturb anybody, but if, if, I'm aware of some folks around.
Oh, okay. You could put it all together.
Hold on one second. Let me mute Jeannie.
Jeannie?
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, David.
Okay, so I'm, I'm aware of some uh anecdotal information about uh people getting more unemployment than they're getting, than they would at their job. And I'm sure that's not true of teachers, but um I wonder if, if there, if anybody's thought about whether it makes sense to, well, at least right now, we need our teachers, though. But to, to use or abuse the backup system, I mean, I know the Warwick Broad Band could have applied for some of this money or whatever. We have revenue. It would have been kind of a fraud, but some, some businesses lay people off and right now, the unemployment benefits are pretty high. We'd pay for it over time. Is it a dumb idea to even think about it?
Yeah, we discussed this before, David. We had a significant jump in our work um unemployment rate over the last couple of years with the shift in staffing at Pioneer. Saving about $50,000 this next year because our rate has finally stabilized. And if we lay off a handful of people, we end up paying an increased rate on our entire salary.
Yeah, I know it, but 80% of our expenditures are employee-related, so it's, you know, it's not like it's a insignificant number. I uh, the, no, it wasn't Brattleboro. It was the next uh Supervisor Union North. They just laid off just about all of their paraprofessionals. I wonder what, you know, what modeling that out financially does. Just because we're government-funded doesn't mean we should just spend the money because we have it.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
Currently, what are?
When we discussed it.
Hold on one second, please. Hold on one second. Go ahead, Jeannie. You can speak and then if someone can raise their hand, I can see you on the video screen and.
What are our paraprofessionals doing um given that it's distance learning?
So John, can you?
I would love to say something about that, actually.
Go ahead, Claire.
So Donna Service, right now, um I'm on several, several teams, but one of the teams that I'm on is the 11th grade team and I'm working with Amy Brown, Carol Sacco and Donna Service. Donna Service is supporting every student on 504 or an IEP. I also have to say that we're using Google Classroom, so anytime a student asks, you know, a question on the Google Classroom, we get an email and I go into my email and I look at the email and I go to the comment and then I want to respond for the student. Donna's already done that. Every single.
So Claire, can I just interrupt you for one second respectfully? I just want to make sure we don't use people's names. Um, I know you're using it as an example. If, if you want to move forward and just not use individuals' names, that would be, thank you so much.
I, I just have to say that the person that's working on our team, she's like an additional teacher to us. We are not, we're, we are not a team of three and an IA. It's like we are a team of four teachers. I cannot say enough about what she's doing. How, um, she is totally on the spot helping not only our 11th grade students, but she's also, she's also helping to 12th grade students because I'm on the 12th grade team as well and she is helping them navigate the pathway through the curriculum. And she has been just unbelievable. At our team meeting today that we had from one to two, I actually had to stop. First thing that I said at the meeting was how much I supported her and Amy Brown and Carol Sacco, they jumped on the bandwagon as well. We are a team of four teachers because we have this IA working with us. She sets up all our meetings. She types up all our notes. She's working probably just as hard, if not harder, as we all, if, if we were all back at school. So that from my point of view, that is what my, you know, para is doing on our team and thank God we have her because we need her.
Go ahead, Sharon. I saw your hand up next. Sharon? Can you hear me, Sharon? Go ahead.
Um, I, I expect that the principle is.
Can't hear me?
Hello? Do you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Okay, I expect the principle of following the uh work performances of the assignments and all for the teachers and for the IAs. So um is that true or is it not true, Claire?
Yeah, I, I can hop in here really quick. This is uh John. I, I would just like that um, yeah, everybody's held accountable. everybody's held accountable. This is, you know, a big reason that our remote learning plan the way we did, and we're working in teams so that we can support each other. Everybody's got, you know, their job to do, and everybody is doing their job. They are definitely accountable, not only to their team, but they're accountable to the, their principals and their supervisors. There's check-ins constantly, like Claire said. It's almost daily. And I would like to say that the IAs have done a tremendous job, and I really support them. I think a lot of times they're overlooked in every school district for what they provide to our students in our, in our district. And I just get to say that I think we have the best IAs of any district around, and they are really working hard through this COVID-19, as are our staff. They're doing a tremendous job. And I think talking to any teacher in the district, you know, they're probably working at least twice what they normally do, just because of the amount of Zoom meetings and even on the weekends to prepare for the week. It's tremendous. It's tremendously stressful for, for all of us, I think. But they are really holding their own and really just doing a fantastic job for the students and the families and stuff like that. Not only the teachers, but the IAs have been remarkable. And I want to thank them, and I've been very impressed with them. They are held, just like every, all of us. They're all held accountable, and they're doing a great job.
So I'd just like to say, I've had the opportunity to, as a parent, witness these Google Meet classroom meetings. And I feel as though our staff, our teachers, our IAs, everyone is working 10 times harder, given that we are now doing this remote learning. Seeing the first Google Classroom virtual meet was, it's quite chaotic. You have a multiple, a multitude, you know, age groups and students with various needs and where they're at with the learning and the assignments. And it's really, I couldn't agree with you more, John. Everyone is, is working, I think, 10 times harder than we would have had to work, given our remote working situation as opposed to being in person, because the need is just so much greater now that we have this technology. As we've experienced this evening, trying to use this technology presents as a challenge. So. I see Abby is shaking her head yes. So I don't know if you want to say anything, Abby.
I mean, just to piggyback on that, I mean, my, my daughter is in kindergarten, and watching those Google meets and how they've evolved from complete chaos into semi-organized chaos has been incredible. And I commend the work of all of our staff members and all the work, everything they're doing for our students right now.
So do we need a motion, or can we take a vote, or what?
Yep, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding between Pioneer Valley Regional Education Association and the Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state of emergency concerning the COVID-19.
This is David. I second.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? No? Okay, I'm going to go down my list of attendees for this evening. If you can just state your name and your vote, please. Jim?
Tim Bell, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil, yes.
Pat?
Pat Sharon, yes.
Seth?
Uh, Kristen, I just need to understand if this is for the support staff as well, because if it is, then I will abstain. This is the paras and the teachers?
No.
So, no, this is.
This is just the teachers?
Right, just the teachers. The next one, number three, is of the support professional.
Okay, just because we were talking about that a lot, I want to make sure. Okay, so Seth Kratz, yes.
Okay. Sue?
Uh, Sue took a walk. And I was supposed to text her. I'll try. Come back to her.
All right, okay. Jessica?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sharon?
Sharon Fontaine Lyden, yes.
Okay, Kristen Gonzalez, yes. And let's see, we'll circle back to Sue if she's back. David, any response from her?
I just texted her.
Okay. We'll give her a minute.
You know what? It's, doesn't, doesn't look like a close vote, so she'll probably.
Okay, all right, okay. So then, number three next on our agenda, and if everyone's okay, I'm going to put Sharon at the top of the list for the votes because she keeps getting kicked off. So when I go through, so the next item on the agenda is memorandum of understanding between the Pioneer Valley Regional Association of Support Professionals and Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state of emergency concerning COVID-19.
So moved.
David Young, second.
Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you. All right, Sharon?
Yes, Sharon Fontaine, yes.
Okay, Jess? Jess, are you there? All right, we'll come back to Jess. Sue?
I got it. Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes, sorry.
It's the mute thing.
Sue, are you, have you returned to us? I'll come back to her. Seth, you can't vote on this?
Yeah, I abstain.
Okay, Pat?
Pat Sharon, yes.
Karen?
Uh, yes, Karen O'Neil.
Jeannie?
Yes.
David?
He already said yes.
Yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Jim?
Tim Bell, yes.
Kristen Gonzalez, yes. And Sue? Are you there? Okay. All right, so that motion passes. So, um, let's see.
Hey, Kristen, this is Ann. There were a lot of people talking when the motion was made. Can you just clarify who made that motion, please?
So Jeannie?
I got David as the.
It was Jeannie.
Jeannie, okay, thank you. I've lost my video connection again, so I'm relying on names. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So the next, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I would just like to say thank you to all the school committee for supporting us because we are all working really, really hard. So on behalf of the support staff, I thank you all very much.
Okay, can you just say who you are, Kim, please?
I'm sorry, Kim Gott, re-president of the union of the support staff.
Claire Brennan, and I also want to thank you for supporting that. We are all, you know, doing the best that we can under these, you know, conditions that are just so unbelievably stressful. We are all working very hard, and we really do appreciate your support. So, Kristen, I'm back. I vote.
Thank you for all that you are doing. Okay, thank you, Sue.
Sorry about that. I had to run to the bathroom.
That's quite all right. And, and did you get Sue's vote in that?
You forgot to take your pass, Susan.
I know, I got in the affirmative.
Okay, great, thank you. So number four, under new business, is the memorandum of understanding between the Pioneer Valley Regional Education Association and the Pioneer Valley Regional School District regarding the evaluation process due to the state of emergency concerning the COVID-19.
Kristen?
John, could you please speak to that?
Yes, you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a memorandum of agreement. This is really being done in most districts throughout the state. I talked to Russell about this. He put together this template. And we're, we're actually voting on the original one that was emailed, not the one Joanne just sent. The one Joanne just sent had an additional line about educators providing a brief summary about updates in regards to the goals. But we're not including that. We're just going back to the original memorandum of agreement that first came in your packet from Joanne without that, that line in there. Because I did talk to the union, and they, you know, felt that they did not want that in there. And it really doesn't need to be in there. So I'm fine with it. We've been working really well together. So this is in regards to the original memorandum of agreement. That basically says all school year, 2019, 2020 evaluations will be on hold. And there's a process listed in this memorandum of agreement. And this is, you know, Russell reviewed this, the unions reviewed this, and I reviewed it. And we're all in agreement that this is, you know, something that we support. I don't know, Claire, if you want to add in that, you know, with your support on this?
Yes, you know, the original agreement, we're fine with that. We read through it. We've done this once before where we've held off on evaluation. It really just, it really just means that everybody starts over. There's, you know, some, you know, provisions for people who may be on a, you know, improvement plan. We're absolutely in total agreement with that first MOU that came out on May 4th that Joanne sent us. I'm happy to sign that, yes. Thank you.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
That was Sharon?
Pat, second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? None? Okay, Sharon?
Yes. Oh, yes, Sharon Fontaine.
Okay, Jessica?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly McCray Warwick, yes.
Thank you. Seth?
Seth Kratz Northfield, yes.
Pat?
Pat Sharon Northfield, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil Lyden, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, yes.
David?
David Young, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Jim?
Tim Bell, yes.
Okay, and Kristen Gonzalez, yes. Ann, are you all set with that one? Okay. Number five, under new business, letter of agreement between the Pioneer Valley Regional Education Association and the Pioneer Valley Regional School District regarding co-curricular club stipends. John, would you like to speak to this a little bit?
Sure, I actually think Tanya's going to speak to this.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Tanya.
So basically, what was budgeted for the co-curricular stipends was based on whatever happened last year. And there is a certain amount that is in the contract for these stipends. And as from budget talks for FY21, you know that we've increased that budget for next year to include all of them that are in the contract. What happened this year is we have teachers that are being advisors for clubs that are not currently in the contract. So this MOA or MOU essentially took the remainder of the budget as it stood when this happened. And, you know, we were still in school, and divvied it up between those four individuals that were taking on new clubs. And I think Claire can just confirm that.
Sure, sure. Yes, you know, we did. We had several teachers who actually came into the beginning of the school year, and they were willing to, you know, provide these clubs, clubs and opportunities for students after school, many of them two to three, four times a week that they were working with students. And they were willing to work with them with, just to work with them. And then we found out that we had this extra money. And so, you know what, it's like, it was part of the stipend for clubs and activities, you know, after school. So we just decided that the best thing to do was just take the money, divided by the number of teachers that were providing clubs and opportunities for enrichment for students after school, and, you know, just share that money out for them. And, you know, if COVID had not come, they would still be doing it. And if the money was not there, they would still be doing it.
Thank you, Claire. Go ahead, Jeannie.
Claire, what, what were the opportunities that were there for the students?
Well, I know that Matt Sawyer, he was doing the bike club and another after-school club. I mean, like, these were like, some of them were like physical. Tracy Derrin was doing an art club three times a week for students after school. So, you know, I mean, these were like really, you know, good hands-on activities for kids. And, you know.
They need to be recognized.
They do need to be recognized. And you know what? They were willing to do it before, you know, we even said, hey, we have some money. And they were like, oh, well, that would be great, but we're going to keep doing it anyway. So.
And I think I have spoken with Claire, but I'll just say it publicly, I would like the unions to actually take a look at that list of clubs because I think a lot of the ones that are on there aren't maybe being used before, but there are a lot of other opportunities for the students.
So I can, I can address that as well. When we went into negotiation, you know, a couple of years ago, the lawyer, you know, Mr. Dupre, Fred Dupre, he really just wanted to talk about, you know, the contract and the increase. He didn't really talk about anything else. That was something that was on the list. I know that at Pioneer that we have really, you know, looked at the list of clubs and the stipends, and we know which ones are no longer existing. But until we come back into negotiation next year, there's not a lot that we can do about it. And I, we would love to get that cleaned up.
Well, I'm thinking we could, if you guys could work together, we could do a permanent MOU within the amount that's currently in the contract for next school year, because there may be additional clubs that the teachers want to have to replace what's on there. And you could certainly look at a MOU for next school year.
I think that's something that we should really talk about, you know.
Because I think they're coming to this more than ever.
I think that's a great idea so that we have some, you know, ability to, you know, move in and out of different clubs. Because you never know, one year from another. If, you know, 20 kids are in it one year, and then two are in the next, then, you know, obviously, there needs to be change. I think that's a great idea that we should talk about.
Yeah, I think for this coming next school year, I think, I mean, I'm certainly on board if you guys can get together and put together a list that are currently happening, and then bring in another MOA to the district for, you know, removing certain ones and adding the ones that you guys want to have be in place for next school year.
Okay, that's, yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Time for a motion, Kristen?
Yes, Sharon, it is.
I approve that we accept the letter of agreement between the Pioneer Valley Regional School Education Association and the Pioneer Valley Regional School District regarding co-curricular club stipend.
I second it. O'Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. All right, any other discussion?
Thank you for doing that.
All right, so we'll begin with the votes. Sharon?
Sharon Fontaine, yes.
Jess?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly McCray Warwick, yes.
Seth? Seth?
Oh, sorry, Seth Kratz Northfield, yes.
Pat?
Pat Sharon Northfield, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, yes.
David?
David, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Jim?
Tim Bell, yes.
And Kristen Gonzalez, yes. So the next item on the agenda, I am actually going to turn the meeting over to Pat at this time, to remove myself from this portion of the meeting because it is a conflict for me. So I'm going to excuse myself. And John, if you could just let me know when this portion is over, I can return to the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
So this is Jim. So do I just hang up the phone?
Yeah, Jim, just hang up the phone, and then John will call you when that portion is over. And I'm not sure, Seth, what your position is regarding this item as well.
Yeah, no, I reached out today but did not hear back in time. So John and I thought it best if I just do the same and jump off. And he's going to text me. John, you'll text me when it comes back on? Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm removing myself.
Okay, I think we're ready. Has everyone got this memorandum of agreement in front of them? I printed it off, but I'm not sure. If you have, if you have it, I'm not going to read it. But if you don't have it, I can read through it.
Do you want me to sum it up really quick?
That would be great. Yeah.
Okay. A memorandum of.
Tell me the title.
It's the Pioneer Valley Regional School District, and the Coaches Committee hereby agrees the following terms, conditions, and understandings relating to the state of emergency concerning COVID-19. Co- concerning COVID-19. So go ahead, John.
Was this in the packet of 16 documents we got for the meeting?
Yep, it was. That's a lot.
Does anyone tell me what the label is?
What the what?
Memorandum of, memorandum of agreement, it says. Um, and it's, and, and bold, it's the school district and the coaches committee.
I think it's a twelve document.
I got it, thanks.
Um, so just to sum this up, um, as we all know, the spring sports season was canceled. Um, however, our spring coaches held, uh, coaches meetings with parents and students and helped them sign up, um, and did some work in preparation for the spring sports season and put in time. I think, uh, that the softball and baseball coaches are still like dragging the fields or going to be dragging the fields and trying, you know, keeping weeds down and doing that. So, um, again, we checked with Russell and, uh, you know, we, we want to compensate the coaches for the time that they did put in. So, um, we did some research and talked about it and we thought that twenty, 25% of their stipend, um, that we would agree to pay them because of the time they have put in and, and are going to continue putting in, um, at least in maintaining the fields. A lot of coaches are also, um, you know, contacting your athletes, providing them workouts, um, through, there's things to do at home. Um, so they're still active in our, in a lot of our athletes' lives. So we thought this was fair, a fair agreement to have with the head varsity and junior varsity coaches, um, that have done the work and continue to do the work.
Okay, questions of John? Like this.
No.
How much money is it?
It's, it's 25% of whatever their stipend would be.
So what's the total?
So I actually don't have the total because I didn't have the list of, um, coaches until today, but the average coach is about 2,500 bucks and there's six of them, John, I believe, that we're paying.
Yes, yep.
So it is minimal compared to the amount that we had budgeted. So it's about 3,500 to $4,000. It depends on what step they're on. And like I said, I just received the list of coaches through conversation late this afternoon, um, and was not able to put the figure together. But we still have a significant amount, obviously, left in our spring coaches' budget that is not being used.
Thanks, Tanya.
Paying any of our regular coaches.
Okay, is anyone, if there's no questions, we're waiting for a motion?
So moved.
Jeannie. Oh, it's Jeannie. Okay, and a second?
Second?
Sharon, that's Sharon.
Okay, um, all those in favor, um, I don't have the list, but I'll go by the pictures I see in front of me. How's that?
Good. Pat, it's Ann. Just clarify, who was the second on that? I couldn't hear.
It was Sharon.
Sharon, okay, thank you.
And I voted yes. Okay, Sharon, Sharon says yes. Um, Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Um, David?
David, yes.
Okay. Um, Jeannie?
Jeannie, yes.
Jess?
Jess Marshall, yes.
Um, Chris, Kristen's left. Um, Karen?
Karen, yes.
And Sue?
Sue, yes.
And I think that's everybody. And I also, Pat says yes also. So that motion passes. So now we need to get Kristen back on the scene.
Okay, I just texted her to come back, you know, contacts and Jim as well.
Kristen, Jim, and Seth.
Right.
Yeah, I put them all down as abstain. Or should I just put them as left meeting?
Left meeting. If they're. The next thing. Uh, Kristen's not there. Excuse me. Wouldn't it be that they accused themselves? No, they left the meeting. They left the meeting.
Okay.
I'm back. So are you all set or do you need me to leave again?
We were waiting for you.
Oh, thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Is Seth back and Jim?
Yeah, I'm here, Kristen.
I'm with Jim right now because he doesn't have a cell phone.
Okay.
I'm calling his phone number.
Guys getting cold.
Yeah, I just put on a jacket inside.
Well, get your snow, get your snow shovels ready.
Yeah.
I know. Can you believe it?
Oh, I'm.
It's Mother's Day. We don't need snow. Happy Mother's Day, ladies. Yeah, Happy Mother's Day, everybody.
Thank you.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
While we wait to get Jim on the phone, um, I'll just read our item number seven.
Yes.
Discussion and vote to establish a regional transportation reimbursement fund pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 16C as in Charlie.
Kristen, do you want me to go ahead and go through that or do you want me to wait till Jim's back on?
Um, you can begin.
Okay.
He should be joining us any minute.
Chapter 71, Section 16C regarding regional school transportation allows a district to create a revolving fund, special revenue fund for regional school transportation reimbursement. The school district has not had this before because we have not had excess money in transportation or any place else for that matter. Um, but when we came into this crisis that we're currently in and we were looking at different ways that we could assist the towns in the FY21 budget and knowing that we were going to be receiving, um, some savings in our transportation budget itself, the expense this year, I decided to bring forward to the school committee to set up this fund. And what this, the, um, the motion will need to read to accept to create the regional transportation reimbursement fund and allow the district to deposit excess reimbursement. Um, the intent is not to deposit all of our funds in there. The only reason that I'm requesting this be set up so that if we budget, for example, this year 469,000 because the state tells us to budget a 72% reimbursement rate and we get 78%, it allows us to offset our next year's budget with the amount that we receive in extra. So going into FY21, under the budget constraints that we know we're going against, the excess that we're going to receive this year, in addition to the budget amendment that I'll bring forth to the school committee on the 22nd to reduce the budget for the amount of savings we're going to get in the transportation contract to be voted next, will allow us to probably have about another $100,000 to offset next year's budget on, on the transportation side. So the revenue gets directly coded to this regional transportation reimbursement fund as well as the, um, transportation itself. But it is still, becomes reimbursable even though it's technically paid out of reimbursement fund. So it doesn't change the way that we get reimbursed. It just allows us to put excess reimbursement over the budgeted amount into this fund to allow us to offset the transportation for the following fiscal year. But it does have to be used in the following fiscal year. It doesn't carry forward, um, any more than one year. Does anyone have any questions?
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, Tanya, for explaining that. Sorry, I couldn't get to my unmute button. Are there any other questions or, uh, we can entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, vote to establish the regional transportation reimbursement fund pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 16E.
And allow the district to deposit excess reimbursement into said fund.
Thank you.
The overseer asked us to specifically have that language in it so that it restricts us to only putting our excess in there that, that doesn't allow us to put our entire revenue.
Good. Ann, did you get the rest of that? That Tanya added?
So I got to, um, a regional. Oh, boy. It, the, the add-on was to allow the district to deposit excess transportation reimbursement into the account.
Yeah. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
No problem.
This is Karen. I second that motion.
Thank you, Karen. All right, let's go down the list. Sharon?
Yes.
Jess?
Jessica Marshall, yes.
Sue?
Sue Riley McCray, yes.
Seth?
Seth Kratz, yes.
Pat?
That's Sharon, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, yes.
David?
David, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Jim, are you here with us yet? I don't think he's been able to reconnect with us. Um, we'll give him a minute. And Kristen Gonzalez, yes. All right, we'll, we'll continue on and hopefully Jim will be able to rejoin us. Um, number eight is, uh, discussion and vote on the amended contract with FM Kuzmeskis. Tanya, would you like to speak to this, please?
Sorry, I muted myself again. So, again, with the current situation we're in, um, there has been much discussion across the state, conference calls, et cetera, guidance from the state about paying our contractors and so forth. I won't go into every detail because it's been almost a month-long process to get to this point, but I've been involved in many calls, John, um, also with Pam, other, um, area business managers, as well as the commissioner, um, Jay Sullivan and so forth regarding this. And basically what we came up to is that we are allowed to pay for the continuum of services. And because we have this contract with Kuzmeskis, um, they have, they calculated a discount for us based on the things that they're still paying for and that what they're no longer paying for. A big part of our contract with them is actually the buses themselves. It's not so much salaries and insurance and so forth. So the 78% that's being recommended in this contract is paying for all of those assets essentially that they are required to finance and have to be ready for next year to transport our students as well as the fact that they are still paying 100% of health insurance for all their employees, even though some of them have been furloughed, but they have some, kept a number of staff because they are, um, providing meals throughout, um, the Franklin County area, including our schools via Franklin County Tech. So, and this is, um, the percentage that has been come to, um, for multiple transportation contractors across the state, um, including Vanpool. We do not have a contract with Vanpool because it's special ed, but they have provided us a letter with the, the same discount for our transportation as well. And again, it's a readiness payment, um, because as part of their services to us, they have to be ready to service us when school starts in the fall with all of their asset and their people to transport the students to school. And we're legally responsible to transport the students to school. And if either of these businesses went under, we would then have to buy buses, maintain them, hire drivers and so forth. So, um, again, this has been about a month-long process that John and myself have been involved in. Um, the contract itself was a, um, kind of standard one that our council provided to us that is being used across Franklin County by other school districts. And we just completed it with our vendor's information and the discount that we're being provided. And it's going to save us about $58,000. So we'll be, and again, I'll be bringing, we'll be amending the transportation revenue down by that amount as well as the expense amount, which is going to allow us to put the excess reimbursement into that regional transportation fund that you just voted on. And that will be fa- flow through to the FY21 budget amendment that will also be brought forth to the school committee at the end of May. So it's a domino effect of all these things that we're putting into place.
So what would a good motion sound like?
Um, we just need to accept the, whatever this MOA, the title of it is. I don't have the document in front of me right now because I'm speaking.
We can't vote on something we don't know. So it's an amended contract.
You guys have, you guys have, should have that contract in your documents that was emailed to you.
All the letter of commitment.
It is, let's see, where, it came piecemeal. So I just have to find it in my emails from the actual title from, it is.
We've got the section.
It's a letter of commitment between Pioneer Valley Regional District and MF Kuzmeskis, Inc. As presented. I think it'll be fine.
So moved.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there a second?
Karen O'Neil, second.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any other discussion? All right, we'll go down the list, um, to place our votes. Sharon?
Sharon Fontaine, yes.
Jess?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sue?
Sue Riley McCray Warwick, yes.
Patricia?
Um, that's her, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, yes.
David?
David, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Jim, you've rejoined us. Welcome back. Jim? He was here. Jim, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I sure can now.
Yep.
Okay, Jim Bell, yes.
Okay. And Kristen Gonzalez, yes. All right. The next item on our agenda is discussion and vote regarding exploratory committee and shared services study with Gil Montague. John, would you like to begin?
Um, sure. Just give me one second, sorry. Uh, so I had, um, I know, I met with a consultant, um, right back, uh, before we closed our schools. I believe it was on March, uh, 11th at an in-person meeting, um, with three of the consultants, uh, to discuss, uh, Gil Montague's study, uh, taking place. They had, Gil Montague received a grant from, uh, the Department of Ed, um, to look at, uh, forming a six-town region, um, and so they're, they're looking for information. So when I met with them, I, you know, made it pretty clear that I wanted to bring this in front of the school committee and it was on our March 12, um, school committee, uh, meeting agenda. Uh, but that meeting was canceled that day because of the coronavirus situation. Um, so I just thought, thought it was important to bring, you know, in front of this committee. And, uh, also the fact that we are limited with allocating resources. We have a director of finance that's only on 10 hours a week. Although Tanya, I know, has been putting in more time. It's been stressful on her, um, in this situation. I'm working seven days a week. So I don't feel comfortable allocating time. And quite, quite honestly, my priority is, is the district. I work for the Pioneer Valley Regional School District. I don't work for the consultants. Uh, I don't work for Gil Montague and I'm always going to prioritize our district first. Um, and with the situation, uh, the coronavirus and this kind of got put on hold, I received many calls from the consultants and even some from members of, of the committee from other towns telling me that I needed to re, you know, allocate resources and provide all this information. So, um, you know, this is not my priority, although I have no problem trying to provide information as we can and having Tanya provide information as we can. But I again, wanted to bring it in front of the school committee. Um, it is not, um, so, so that's what we're doing here tonight. Um, and, uh, we did have a call, uh, with Kristen Gonzalez, myself and Jay Sullivan. Um, and, uh, we did have a call, uh, with Kristin Gonzalez, myself and Jay Sullivan about this, and we made it very clear to him that we were going to try to, um, you know, do the best we could to provide the information to the consultants and to the committee. Because I do understand, you know, that, that the work is important, you know, to that committee and what they're trying to do and accomplish. Um, but again, they have to understand that we are limited on resources and time. And quite frankly, this has not been my priority in this situation at all.
And I just, I want to clarify, oh, David, I see your hand up. Um, if you could just give me one minute, I want to clarify a couple things. Um, one of the things was that I have had conversations with Steve Hemmend, um, and Alan Genovese, who is the chair of the sixth town. Let's see if I can get this correct. The sixth town regionalization planning board committee. I think I said that correct. Um, and they were not aware that Tanya was only working ten hours per week. So that I was able to clarify with them regarding Tanya's limited availability. Um, the other thing is when I had those conversations with Steve and Alan, and I actually also spoke with Greg Snedeker, who is a representative on the sixth town regionalization planning board committee. He is a member from the town of Gil. Um, they were able to really provide a lot of information that I personally felt I didn't have as far as what the grant looked like. Um, answered quite a few questions, really brought me up to speed. Um, this was something that the towns did vote on, um, when they had annual town meeting. And we do have representatives from, um, the school committee that sit on the sixth town regionalization planning board committee. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, David, you are the representative for Warwick. Pat is the representative for the town of Northfield. Um, and Abby, you are the representative from Lyden. Berninston still does not have representation on this committee.
No, that's not, that's not correct.
Um. A school committee member.
Well, they do have an in lieu of school committee member, Jane Dutcher, is representing them. That's been officially adopted.
Okay, perfect. So Jane is now the, um, complete representative for the town of Berninston and the school committee, um, on that planning board. So Pat, go ahead.
Also have Renee sitting there, and we think she probably represents the town of Berninston educationally as well as anyone else.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, so go ahead, David.
John, it's not a matter of you don't work for the consultants. I recall a very contentious meeting where Sharon Fontaine and I found common ground and the school committee supported that we would, that you were charged with looking for ways to share services. And, you know, the motion, I think, came from me, which meant it was pretty, probably pretty broad. And I don't know what makes this question special, except for the capacity issues and the job protection issues. And from the capacity issues, I don't know how much of it is time or how much is the level of experience that between you and Tanya have that being a school business manager and being, I mean, I respect it. I have family members who are, who teach at university and graduate school level, and they have told me that they have never worked so hard. They already had a pretty good-sized component of online. But now that it's all online, I recognize how much work it is. But it's not about pioneers surviving, it's about us serving our mission. So I'll leave it at that.
I also, oh, hold on one second.
I understand what David's saying, and I do think it's important to continue to look at shared services, and I have been doing that. I actually applied for the shared superintendency at, with Gil Montague. I have been trying to do my part and, and reach out to other districts in consolidation, shared services and, um, collaboration. So I do understand that it really comes down to a matter of, in this situation with everything that's going on, when you're receiving two, three, four phone calls a day about, uh, you know, getting information, and we have a business manager at ten hours a week and I'm on seven days a week on overload trying to take care of a district, it's really a matter, I understand they have a deadline, and it's a matter of prioritizing. And it's not that we won't or aren't willing to work with the consultants, but I just want that to be known that, you know, some of this is time company. We're not, you know, we're not opposed to doing it at all. We just wanted to bring this in front of the school committee so you could address it first. That was the original, um, conversation I had with the consultants before the coronavirus hit. This was on that agenda. Um, and, you know, we, Jay Sullivan, we're going to do our best to try to get them at all, all the information they need and the amount of time that they have. So that's all, that's my, my, my point of view and stance.
So I see a few hands up.
I do want you to know that, um, you know, part, part of what the consultants wanted was just some, um, some of our financial documents, our budgets and such, so they'd understand how we organize things and that they could preconfigure their report to receive that data. So what I've done is I, I, I've been past budget committee chair and a member, and, and I'm a government employee that doesn't throw away emails. So I gave them the best I could find. So they have that now to, to begin to, to pre-populate their reports to, for getting. I gave them a copy of the school committee expense report from two thousand nineteen and some of the year-end closing reports and such. So, you know, here and there, we've changed. And I can say they've have, the consultants have an enormous amount of respect for Tanya. Um, and, uh, they understand her desire to be, um, very up-to-date and accurate and not have any errors. But we kind of need general picture right now if we can't get specifics.
So one of the things that, um, I had specifically asked to be provided with, because I thought it was really important for all of us to know specifically, um, what information, um, they were going to need. And that is why I had forwarded that document to all of you, um, from Alan Genovese that, uh, really outlined, uh, the doc, like, the information that they would need. So I'm going to go to, I saw Abby's hand up, and then I saw Sharon's, and then I saw Tanya's and Sue's as well.
And Jim's hand is up.
And Jim's hand is up. So you'll come after Sue, Jim. I won't forget this order. Go ahead, Abby.
Okay, so first of all, I, I want to say that the grant that the planning board has through Gil Montague has a hard cutoff date of June thirtieth. With the current crisis, we're very unlikely to get an extension. So there's also time constraints on the planning board's time with the consultants. That doesn't mean that we will stop working at that point. It just means that we won't be able to pay the consultants. And what we have at that point, um, is going to be what they can work with. Um, my, my second thing was looking at the agenda item. Um, I'm curious what the, if this is, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what you're hoping we're going to vote on, because like David said, we voted very broadly to, to have you, John, explore regionalization in December. It was a unanimous, um, approval. And so I'm not sure what more we need to discuss in terms of this, instead of just getting the information as we can, knowing that there are limitations to everyone's time and resources, um, moving forward.
So I think we're just looking for a vote to pretty much agree that the school committee wants to utilize the, our resources to move forward with providing this information.
Sharon, you had your hand up next, and then Tanya, then Sue, then Jim.
Yep. Times have certainly changed since December. And I'm, I'm feeling as though this would be, um, pretty cumbersome in the midst of this, um, crisis that we have right now. So I, I really would not be in favor of moving this ahead right now.
Okay, thanks, Sharon. Um, Tanya, you were next, then Sue, then Jim, and I see Pat's hand up now.
So, um, and I'm not, I'm speaking of the whole committee, but kind of David specifically with my willingness or experience provide this information. Um, I just wanted to make it very clear to all of you that what the, or the committee and the consultants are doing right now is they're literally just updating the numbers in the same spreadsheets and stuff that they did last year. They're taking that and making different recommendations than they made before. With that said, they did get provided our, um, closing report from FY nineteen. Um, I spent five hours on a Saturday two weeks ago providing Mark Abrams with updated information for the slides that I could that had, um, are updated, what our actual payment was on our deficit note and a number of things that he needed information on. Um, the other thing that he's looking for is there's a section in their presentation, and Gil Montague has certain percentages for different codes of expenses and what they increase on average per year. Well, that's a, that really is a do-nothing scenario. And I'm trying to work with Mark because there's things that I already know are going to be higher or lower in FY twenty-two, which is two years out. And I don't feel that giving a baseline percentage when we're trying to get a real picture of where the district's really going to be. So that's the time-consuming part, um, is going in and analyzing some of the things like our electric costs, because we've had, um, efficiencies made there and being able to know what those decreases are. Um, I also know that our GIC insurance is going to swing the other way because rates had gone down, but then we had retirees increase. So there's a number of those lines that I know very intricate things about that I need to have conversations with him on. That's the time-consuming part. The other part, and I explained this to Mark, and I'll also be honest with you guys. I've had a very long professional relationship with Mark back to when I started in Ashburnham. So him and I do work very well together, and he understands my constraints on time right now. Um, but we have voted a budget. We are going to be cutting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus from that budget. And I have a really hard time having them build projections for five years off of a budget with inaccurate numbers. So what I did tell them that I would provide is once we had the budget committee meeting last week, and they recommended what would be brought forward to the school committee, as well as, um, the other figures that were results of other things, that I would update the budget line by line as much as I could, but knowing that it had not been voted by the school committee yet, that that would just be an estimate. Because I, there's no point in building projections on a budget that's going to be completely irrelevant. And as it is, the, you know, Gil Montague's basically saying, just use the percentages. We don't know what they're going to be. And I just feel that's a really bad representation of where Pioneer is moving with our efficiencies and operations, um, and efficiencies and electricity and all these other things that we're doing to be able to paint our district. So, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I will be able to hopefully spend some time working on those things with him. Um, but it is, it'll probably be between fifteen and twenty hours to go through a detailed analysis to provide those percentages for him in those code, um, areas that he's looking for.
And Tanya, correct me if I'm wrong, you're still working on closing our, our books, correct?
So I'm not necessarily closing the books right now, but I have spent tremendous amount of time, again, on conference calls with the state and other things surrounding budgeting, admin meetings, but subcommittee meetings, and analysis on a day-to-day basis of where our funds are to, um, to you this budget vote transfer that you have in front of you tonight as well, um, to cover things like early childhood, school lunch, out-of-school time that we're now not collecting revenue for, but we're paying our staff. So it has been a very, very, um, cumbersome, cumbersome project with the COVID-nineteen, um, things that are going on right now. But I've been trying to stay on top of them as fast as I can and do the analysis to make sure that, you know, I just didn't want to come to the May twenty-second school committee meeting with a budget that has negatives all over it. I wanted to get ahead of this so that we could be prepared to look at amending the FY twenty and FY twenty-one budget at our next meeting. So that's what I've been working and focusing on, um, as well as, again, being involved in any meetings that I can with information that's being provided on the CARES Act and all of those things, um, Massachusetts as well.
All right, I'm going to go to Sue, because Sue had her hand up, then Jim, then Pat.
So I, I, I just have to say, I, I feel like it's really disingenuous of this committee to be talking about this as if it, um, is just now being required of us. I think this has been a long, that this process has been going on for a long time. We've had members of our committee participating for a long time. Uh, I've been trying to get it on our agenda for a very long time. Um, it's sort of shocking to me that it has taken us so long to come to a public conversation on this. Uh, I hear Jonathan, I hear you saying it's not your priority. Well, our town leaders made it clear to this committee a long time ago that it was their priority. And I think that it is just inappropriate for us to be so insensitive and unresponsive to that group of people who, you know, manage the money for their town so that this district runs and who have made it clear to us they want us to explore every option for sustainability. And I'm, I'm, it's, it's a drag that it's happening at a crisis point right now, but it didn't have to be. These conversations could have had, could have happened much earlier and should have happened much earlier. And I think that the work has to be done. It's just part of the financial constraint situation that we're in overall.
Okay, Jim?
Yes, okay, so we're in a crisis now. So this is where we are at present. And I think that our, our administrators have so much on their plate that this is one more thing that we don't need to do right now. I'm sorry. Um, and the letter that I read that was sent to us by, um, whoever runs the committee, whatever, I just read so much arrogance in that letter that I, 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 I read it two or three times and I said, ah, I'm not so sure I'm going to be behind this. So I think, um, I think, I think our administrators just have so much going on right now. And we should take care of them.
All right. Um, Pat, you were next.
Um, I think Sue said most of what I was going to say, and I think that's great. Um, but my only thing as far as pushing this is that over a year, year and a half, two years ago, we were asked by our towns if we would form a study committee along with Gil Montague. And our committee voted yes. Maybe the people are not the same, but once a committee makes a vote, then that committee, whoever's made up with it at that point, could back that vote. So to me, we owe it to the towns and the administrators of those towns to get, to do whatever we need to do to move ahead. Um, and maybe it's not Gil Montague, but maybe this is how we find out. But I, I really think that if the towns have asked us to, that we need to stick with it. Maybe it's not a good time, but.
I see Sharon's hand up now.
Yeah, I, I, I think that right now it wouldn't be a good thing. Later, yes. But not right now. Um, we're all just got our head above water trying to work through this crisis. And I think it wouldn't be a good idea to give inaccurate figures. We can't, how do we know what's going to happen in six months? I mean, if you want to study, you want to get some accurate figures in there. Um, and I think that we should explore, but not right now. This is, it's too cumbersome right now in the midst of this crisis.
Sharon, I see your hand up next.
Yes, I would, uh, like to ask Abby a clarification question. She said that it was unlikely that we could get an extension on this grant. Yet I read in, um, the request for quotes that it was likely to expect the grant will be extended beyond this deadline to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And, um, the Department of Ed, uh, Desi is attempting to have it extended. So, uh, what do you know that wasn't in that request for quotes?
That was prior to the current COVID crisis.
That was prior to the current COVID crisis. Now the information has changed and we're being told we will, we're very unlikely to get an extension.
Yeah, what they're doing is they're gathering up all the fragments of money. They're saying you do it or else that because the, the Commonwealth is coming into a real deficit situation. So they're not extending contracts. They're getting really hard nosed. We tried. We, we are, we are done with grant funding. The committee will continue. And if we don't cooperate with accurate numbers, we will you do our best effort. Okay? I don't think that's, that's going to serve Pioneer well. So where John's coming from is not shirking work. It's wanting the committee to recognize what an ask this is and put it in context with other things that are being asked of them. So I, for my part, just wrote an email reasserting my citizen concern about executive session minutes. And I gave the, I filed an open meeting law complaint. As a citizen, I just, and I gave the district thirty day forbearance because of this situation. And I, today I was bringing it back because we can meet by this meeting and these minutes need to be taken care of. But for my part, I'll back off of that. Okay? So that's off of John's plate. This, this project is going forward with good data or the best data that we can conjure. Thank you.
And can I add, Kristen, to David, sorry, to David's comment there?
Sure. And then I just, I want to make sure, um, in order, Jeannie, I see your hand up so people don't have to sit with their hands up. Jeannie, and then I saw she, um Sharon's hand up.
I think David can reiterate, um, basically I wanted, you know, I think it's important to bring in front of this committee and just so people recognize that you know, it is allocating resources to the districts. I just wanted that to be a discussion point among the members here. Like I said, uh, we're not opposed to giving the information and doing the best we can to provide the information. Um, we reiterated that with Jay Sullivan, um, just to recognize the constraints that, as a district and our resources that we have. So just to be I guess respectful and understanding of that, we're trying to do our best. And I thank you, Dave, for kind of clarifying that.
And one other thing, um, in my conversations with Steve and Greg and Alan, I did request um to be uh included more in the tasks that occur so that they could funnel us the information, meeting minutes, agendas, um, next steps. Because I think even though we are not the grant holder, um, it is really important, given that we as a district are going to be included in this information um, that's being provided and an outcome of the grant, we need to be fully included um in the process and have that knowledge whether we agree or not. So I'm going to go to Jeannie next. And then Sharon, and then I saw Tanya, and then I saw Sue.
My concern is that we voted and made a commitment and now we're pulling back from that commitment. And that does not shed a positive light on our district.
Okay. Thanks, Jeannie. Sharon, go ahead.
Actually, um, the state has done the same thing. They're, they're in a crisis as well, money wise. And that's why they pulled back from the twenty twenty-one um cutoff date. And now they changed their mind back to June thirtieth this year because they can see a financial crisis possibly coming down the pike. And they're saying, no, we shouldn't be honoring any more money beyond a certain day. I think that we are doing this under good faith, trying to keep our district alive and trying to focus in on the crisis at hand and not getting off track. So I mean, if, if people are just wanting to hurry up and get inaccurate figures so that they can keep a two hundred thousand dollar grant, that's the wrong idea. The idea would be if the state gives you money to, to devise a program, do it correctly. Don't give half the figures. Don't give inaccurate figures. Don't do it all well. That's the best we can do right now. That's government job. We need to do a good, solid, accurate job. If you're going to take two hundred thousand dollars from the taxpayer money, do an accurate job. And we can't have the time right now.
So I'm going to go to Tanya. I saw Sue's hand up and Abby's hand up next.
I was just wondering if a formal request for an extension had been made because I know ninety percent of the grants that the district receives right now, like the Title One Grants and other special ed grants, we've been given automatic extensions, which is completely opposite of the conversation that's happening. Um, between, you know, with Abby and David saying they're trying to get a pool of money. We've actually had grants extended automatically without us even having to complete a form for carrier to the second year, which is typical practice.
Well, all I can say, all I can say is, is that Michael Sullivan, the Gil Montague Superintendent and his business manager, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, have represented that. And we would all like to stretch this out and keep the consultants on the hook longer. But this is the situation and we are proceeding.
Sue, I saw your hand up next and then Jeannie.
So I just want to say a built in um easy way for us to stay on top of this is to schedule regularly on our agenda an opportunity for our school committee members that are already going to these meetings and are already on top of this to actually communicate with us on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Jeannie, you're next.
Um, I understand what Tanya's saying, but the, the um extensions she quoted are directly linked to student education. And I'm sure that's the reason those were extended.
Okay, and Abby, I saw your hand up.
So I wanted to respond to Sharon that this is why the committee is asking for this information so that we can give the most accurate report or the consultants can give the most accurate report possible. Um, and then um to what Sue just said about having a space for those of us who are on the planning board to speak to our committee, that could easily be put under subcommittee reports to just, so that we can just give an update of what's been happening on the planning board.
Sure.
Really smart, that, Kristen.
Um, I, I understand that Abby and I, I think that we still don't have a handle on what these, this budget is really going to look like. We're already cutting a lot out of the budget. And if you have consultant, may I finish, please? Um, so I, I still don't see where it's accurate to take numbers from budgets that are being slashed and cut um to reflect a, um, idea of trying to gather information to um regionalize with somebody else. I, I just don't see that as being accurate information. Um, it, it doesn't tell the whole story. Um, so I, I, again, I I, I'm not in favor of doing it right now. I vote, we voted on other things that we've had to change our minds on. It's not as though we're not acting in good faith. It's that we're throwing a curve ball and we're trying to do the best we can with it. We can get back to this and revisit it at another time. But right now I don't think is the best time to do that. The numbers won't reflect actually happening.
All right, I'm going to take Karen because she's had her hand up for quite some time.
Um, I'm just wondering why transportation isn't being figured to this study. It seems like it would have an impact on the overall picture. Um, and is it because it might have a negative rather than a positive effect on what regionalization looked like for us?
Can I add to that?
Go ahead, Tanya.
They are, part of this was a transportation study and we actually as a district provided a number of um data reports to Gil Montague at the beginning of this back in February that they required for the transportation consultant and software that they were purchasing with this um grant funds to look at that transportation. So that is part of the study. If you look at their quotes that went in the information that's been.
Let me just respond. I, in their um request for quotes, it said the impact of student transportation will be completed in a separate study.
So that's because it's a different group of consultants. So the Abrams group and the Mars group doing the financial piece for the projection, but there's another group that was part of this grant for a total of, I think, ninety-five hundred dollars. And don't quote me, but it's around that that is doing the actual transportation piece. I don't know how the Abrams and Mars group are integrating that into the financial numbers that we give them because we're giving them our transportation contract projections that we're locked into right now. They may take that transportation study and apply it to years after that. I don't know the answer to, the exact answer to that.
And I saw, I saw Pat's hand up. Pat, did you have your hand up? Oh, I think you're on, are you muted? There you go.
Okay, um, transportation, we did get the transportation information from Tanya early, early on. And that was um, that was to us that she had, or John or someone had given us that information.
And I just want to make a statement um for the purpose of transparency. Alan had emailed me in, in one of our recent correspondence asking me as the chair to join and participate in meetings with him as the chair of that. And I have to be honest with everyone. Um, I cannot extend myself any further than I already am. Um, with my daytime responsibilities with my employment, it's gotten ten times worse and I'm working more because of the COVID. Um, and my availability is quite limited between school committee and then maintaining my own personal family. So I just want that to be clear um that I, unfortunately, I can't commit to anything further in meeting with Alan. Um, I, I'm doing the best that I can and I will continue to read the information um that he provides and Greg provides. But any in-person meetings, unfortunately, I just, I can't commit to that. Um, so if there are emails that come about asking people know why, um, if I'm not able to attend.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Is there any further questions or discussion?
Kristen, this is Jess.
Hi Jess, go right ahead.
Um, so I feel like I'm happy that we'll have Tanya for more hours where she's getting reimbursed at this point. And I'm hoping that that opens up a little bit of a window to feel like the amount of effort that you're putting into everything, Tanya. And including this, um, feels like you're supported from us as a district to do this. I do think it's part of our actual responsibility as a district to be doing the best we can with where we are. And I think probably all of us are, that's kind of the mantra right now. We're doing the best we can with what we've got. And that the diligence that we can put into this, I think will be appreciated by everyone in the district and possibly just in the whole area. And it will help to inform all of our towns and all the people who need to be making decisions about um what we're doing with the money to help support our kids. So I support you and John and anybody else who can be helping to get as much accurate information to this group while we have um some other experts available to us that someone else has gotten a grant for to utilize their services.
Thanks, Jess. Is there anything else that anybody would like to discuss uh in regards to this agenda item? If not, uh, I mean, we do have a vote, so I.
Kristen, I don't know what we're voting on.
So I think that as it was explained earlier, I don't know who had um clarified. It was that during these times that we recognize the work that John and Tanya have already committed themselves to for the district, but will continue to do the best that they can to provide the information necessary. Um, that's my understanding. But anybody can put a motion, anyone can put a motion forward um regarding this topic.
How about I give it a try?
All right, Karen, go for it.
Okay, I would like to um put forth a motion that um recognizes that we are in extraordinary times. And most of you and maybe a few of us are not, but most of us are being stretched beyond recognition with um in some cases, family members ill because of what is happening. Um, and keeping uh work from home in a way that you've never done before, we've never done before. But um, to make a long story short, um, the priority now is to keep the schools going. But we would like to um renew our commitment to providing as much information as we possibly can to meet the needs of the planning board for the study with Gil Montague.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And who is that?
That was Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Any further discussion? No? Okay, I'll go down our list um for the votes. Sharon Fontaine?
Uh, Sharon Fontaine, no.
Jess?
Jessica Marshall Warwick, yes.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly McCray Warwick, yes.
Seth?
Seth Kress, Northfield, no.
Pat?
Asher, Northfield, yes.
Karen?
Karen O'Neil Lyden.
I'm sorry, you cut out, Karen. Could you just repeat?
Sure, Karen O'Neil Lyden, yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, um, no.
David?
David, yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
Jim?
Jim Bell, no.
And Kristen, no. So Ian, could you just please recite the outcome of the vote?
Sorry, I'm muted. Here we go.
That's okay.
Uh, so I've got one, two, three, four, five noes and one, two, three, four, five, six yeses.
Okay, all right. So the motion passed. Okay, on to our financial reports.
All right, I'm going to make this as quick as possible unless you guys have questions. So the accounts payable you have in front of you is a result of voting the amendment on the Cosmesus contract because.
I'm leaving.
Me too.
Okay.
We have not paid.
So David had stated he's leaving and Jim has left the meeting as well.
Oof. Hmm.
All right, so, okay, go ahead, Tanya.
Anyways, so the accounts payable in front of you is basically just our Cosmesus bills that we have on hand that we were waiting to pay until the vote was taken for the FF, FM Cosmesus commitment letter um as well as uh, there's one other thing that she put on this warrant that needed to be taken care of, which was a Verizon bill that had kind of gotten lost in the mail amongst all the stuff that happened and we got it late. So she threw that on this warrant. So that's what the accounts payable is for. So we just will have um Kristen electronically sign that and get that to Brenda so that she can mail those checks out tomorrow. The budget that you guys have in front of you, um, it's probably the largest one I've ever brought to you guys since I've been on the board. Um, again, I tried to make it as simple as possible. I put lines in between the different um sections of what the requests pertain to. The bulk of this is because we have additional funds that we need to put in the school lunch subsidy fund to be able to cover the expenses due to the shutdown, including obviously the salaries for the individuals and expenses that are out there. I did provide backup for the analysis that was done that came to this figure. We rounded up a couple hundred bucks because as you know, there's always some unexpected things that kind of come through. So um, and I also did the same analysis. um, and I also did the same analysis for our early childhood as well as our out of school time. So um, I don't know if you guys want me to go through these section by section. Um, or if you guys have had time to review these before the meeting and want to just take a vote. I'm happy to do either.
All right, what is the consensus of the group?
Well, we've had them for several days and I think probably we all got a chance to review them. So I just make a.
I feel the same way Sharon. I, I've reviewed them myself, but I don't want to speak on behalf of anyone else who.
I have reviewed them as well. This is Karen.
Okay, Abby saying thumbs up.
Two.
Okay.
Pat two, Jeannie?
I'm good to go.
Okay, Sue's good to go.
I'm good to go.
Jeannie's good to go. All right, Tanya, go right ahead.
So I just need you guys to make a motion to um, pass the transfer votes totaling the one thirty-nine, forty, sixty-eight as presented.
So move.
I don't see. Can you repeat the number, please?
Oh, sorry, I, I just closed it. Um, hold on a second.
I didn't get that attachment for some reason.
You should do a couple emails that went out just to get information to the, to everyone in a timely manner, but just bear with me for a second and I'll get back to that number.
Is that the one forty-two, nine thirty-one?
It's one thirty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah, can you just read that Sharon for her?
I, I have one forty-two, one hundred forty-two thousand.
That's the accounts payable.
Okay.
Um, the transfer vote, sorry Anne, is one thirty-nine.
Okay.
One forty-eight cents. Are you good?
One forty-oh-two?
No. No. Anne, I just. I would say it's one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
Yep.
Sixty-eight cents.
Okay, sixty-eight. I couldn't hear the cents for some reason.
Oh, that's okay. And there was another small sheet of transfers, but they were not related because they were in between um, they were in between, within a category, so they're not required to be they were just informational. Um, you have a small change to the rural aid vote in front of you guys. Um, Ariel had just requested that we move some funds from the pay for instructional assistance to attend PD up to the literacy committee stipend. And the total for that literacy committee is actually going to be five thousand dollars, but there's funds in the title one to pay the other thousand. So that's the only change and they're bolded. It was just a shift between the lines and I'm required to have you guys vote if there's any changes in um numbers that you guys previously voted.
Okay, so Tanya, do you need us to vote separately on each item or?
Um, I just need you to vote to accept the rural aid um, amended budget as presented.
Oh, we didn't vote, vote the budget transfers.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Need to vote.
Let's do, so there was a motion and a second?
Correct.
Okay, so um, let's do the budget transfers. Um, Sharon?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Sue? Uh, I, I think she left the meeting. Seth?
Yes.
Okay, Sue, you're back.
Yeah, sorry, I hit the wrong button. Pass.
That's okay. Okay, thank you. Pat?
Pat says yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Jeannie says yes.
Abby?
Abby Pratt, yes.
And Kristen says yes. Okay, and now we'll go through the line again. Um, can someone make a motion for the rural aid, please?
Make a motion that we vote to amend the rural aid lines and if Tanya could give those to us?
Um, you just need to vote it as it's, as presented or to transfer fifteen hundred dollars from the instructional PD line to the literacy committee stipend line, however you guys want the vote made.
Did you get that Anne?
They're both very different.
Got it.
Okay, so we're voting to amend the rural aid line as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeannie. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Sue?
Yeah, Sue.
Seth?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Karen?
Uh, yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Abby?
Abby, yes.
Kristen, yes. Okay, perfect. Um, so other business not anticipated by the chair prior to the posting. Um, John, feel free to jump in.
Oh, I think Pat's hand, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Pat.
I saw um, on an email that Cheryl had sent out from the um, principal's office that we needed to get graduation reservations in by tomorrow.
Yes.
If anyone is thinking of attending graduation, you need to call the office or email tomorrow.
Thank you for that reminder, Pat.
Well, I just was afraid I'd forget.
I think graduation this year is going to be, um, not only is it a creative graduation, but I think there's going to be a tremendous amount of support in highlighting the seniors um, of Pioneer. So I'm really excited uh, for that graduation and to see how it all unfolds. Um, one of the other things that I good, um, one of the other things um, that I wanted to talk about briefly just so that um, it is public information now, um, we did receive the letter from Desi regarding the closure of Warwick School. Um, John, I don't know if you want to jump in at any point, so feel free to do so.
Um, yeah, we, I received the, an email yesterday at four thirty PM um, uh, from the commissioner, the department of that, and he's approving closure of the Warwick Community School. Um, I had uh, emailed those many members, the, the chairs of the four um, board of selection um, that yesterday, shortly after I, very shortly after I received it. Um, but uh, that's just something that I wanted to, you know, just bring up and, and um, let everybody know that we did receive the approval from the commissioner uh, for the closure.
And similar to um, when we experienced this process as uh, it pertained to rural roads, um, we want to be very sensitive and aware regarding uh, the students and the families at Warwick. So I know that John is um, in the process of uh, communicating and thinking about what we can do for those students and um, what that school closure is going to look like given that we are in the midst of the COVID nineteen. Um, but I think it's important for the students and the families of Warwick Community School to have an opportunity to have some type of closure. Uh, so John will present that to us.
Yeah, and we're working with Chris Mullin.
When that plan is determined.
Yeah, and brainstorming ideas for those um, for giving some closure to the students and the families there. So we're, we're working and we just kind of have to take it uh, as the governor, you know, uh, updates us is it maybe is it stay at home, state of emergency going to be extended or they're going to start easing up. But we do have the students and the families uh, in Warwick in mind and, and, and trying to work together and communicate about how to best um, you know, give them that closure.
Jeannie, I see your hand up.
This is just um, a very significant time of grieving for the Warwick community on a, as a whole. And um, I'm sure it's extremely difficult for them.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Go ahead, Sharon.
It, it is, Jeannie, and thank you for, for saying that. Um, it's a difficult time for Warwick and I know as well as they do that this is a heartfelt time for them. But there's, there's sun on the horizon. Our Lyden kids are doing great at Berniston. We've got a wonderful district. They opened their arms to those kids and they are all doing fine. Um, and I know there's good things to come for the Warwick students.
Thanks Sharon. Um, again, I want to reiterate um, to all of the staff and faculty that we have here within the district, um, to all of the families and the students. This time that we have been closed due to the pandemic has been extremely challenging for everyone um, personally and professionally. And I just want to thank everyone for the tremendous amount of patience um, and understanding and the commitment from the staff and faculty um, to ensure that every single student and family, because the families have been supported in addition to the students um, for all of their hard work. Um, this has been a really challenging experience for everyone. Um, and I'm really proud that despite the challenge, uh, we have been able to really stick together, um, really remain positive. I think the parade that was last Friday was a testament to that. Um, and to still create a really strong morale within the district. So thank you, everyone. Go ahead, Jeannie, I see your hand is up.
Well, I have all of your undivided intentions. Um, keep the seniors in mind over the next few weeks. Even though this, this is a very um, special way of graduating, they all are grieving on some level for not being able to have their normal graduation year, their twelfth grade end of year activities. I've seen it front and center and so just keep all of them in your mind.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is there anything else, anything else that anyone would like to speak on? Um, before we announce our next meeting date? Go ahead, Jeannie, I see your hand up again.
John, John, you still on?
Yes, I am.
What happened to those guys that were out in front of Pioneer um, during the parade?
I think those were put up in a torrential rain. I think they were taken, I think they were taken down. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I got a picture of them before the.
So I can tell you, I can answer that question.
They weren't ruined, I hope.
So the signs were put up and then um, I actually was the one who ran over and took them down in the midst of the pouring torrential rain. They were not ruined, but because some of the, the backings were not covered, they got a little soggy. So those individuals who created the signs were really fearful um, that they were going to get ruined and they wouldn't sustain that weather that we endured that night. So there is a plan for those signs to be put back up, is my understanding.
Graduation?
Uh, I don't know specifically, but I know that there are many ideas um, being discussed on how those signs can be incorporated into, to what's to come. So they are going to be posted.
Let me know if there's anything I can do to help.
Thanks, Jeannie. Anything else anyone would like to say?
I just have a question.
Sure.
At our regular meeting in two weeks, will we be taking up proposed um, changes to next year's budget?
Yes, you'll have an FY twenty amendment to the budget for the transportation items as well as the school choice offset. And the budget subcommittee will be recommending um, the items that were discussed at our budget subcommittee last time. They'll be um, recommending those to be made and that will be presented as well. Um, that and the Warwick will be presented as part of the FY twenty-one budget amendment, but they will be very definitively um, laid out separately so that the committee can clearly see the recommendations from the budget subcommittee for the crisis as well as um, the savings and restructuring from the Warwick closure. So that will be happening by me in the next couple of weeks before the next school committee.
Okay, so the, all the letters of support for various positions, um, you know, those will be addressed at the next meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So um, if no one else has anything to say, um, our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting for the PVRSD is Thursday, May twenty-first at seven PM via Google Meet. Tyler from BNC TV, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you so much. Jeannie?
John, can you give me a call sometime tomorrow? I do have a Zoom meeting between nine and ten.
Sure, no problem.
I'll be home. Thank you.
Okay, yep, no problem.
There's a motion, if there's a motion to it. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm continuing to get all kinds of letters in my inbox about the adjustment counselor position. Is that going to be a discussion at the next meeting?
Yes, it's my understanding that yes.
So that'll be on our agenda for next meeting. That'll be part of the budget discussion that will happen that, that has, will be brought forward by the budget subcommittee. Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second, Karen O'Neil.
Thank you, Karen. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
Bye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a nice weekend.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.